Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Williamsburg City Council Meeting of November thirteenth. Ms. McKay, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ramsey?
Here.
Mayor Pons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Here.
Ms. Kernscher?
Here.
Good. Ms. Williams is regretfully unavailable to be here today, but sends her regards. We have in our packet minutes for the City Council Work Session of October sixth and the City Council Works, uh, City Council Meeting of October ninth. Are any corrections?
I move that the minutes from October sixth and October ninth be approved.
Second.
Ms. McKay?
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kernscher?
Aye.
Okay. We have no matters for special privilege, so we'll move on to the public hearings. And first is consideration and action regarding PCR number twenty-five dash zero-one-eight and PCR dash twenty-five dash zero-two-four, two special use permits to allow Colonial Williamsburg Foundation's arrival center and parking master plan along Lafayette Street. Mr. Weisong, welcome.
Thank you, and good afternoon to City Council. Today I'll be presenting PCR twenty-five dash zero-one-eight and PCR twenty-five dash two-four. This is a request from the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation for two special use permits to operate, to operate an arrival center and a parking master plan for the property that is addressed four-twenty-seven Franklin Street. Just to give an overview of the proposal, this would be to redevelop the existing outdated Colonial Williamsburg support facilities into an arrival center building with adjacent parking. This proposed thirty-four-hundred-square-foot arrival building is proposed to provide ticketing, restrooms, and small retail opportunities for tourists and visitors coming to Colonial Williamsburg and the city of Williamsburg. And here you can see the location map of the existing site. This proposal is adjacent to Lafayette Street, and this block is currently used as CW support facilities, except for the Mount Ararat Baptist Church down in the southwest corner, which will not be demolished or disturbed as a result of this proposed development. And here on the next slide, you can see the proposed master plan for the site. The site's going to center around the arrival center building, which is in the center of the block. You've got a proposed bus loop, an access point that's in front of the proposed center, as well as surface parking that's going to be proposed in three phases serving the site. And the overall point here is that visitors will be allowed to park within a very close proximity to the downtown historic area for the foundation, which is the desired trend the foundation has seen for visitors in recent years. For all special use permits, planning staff evaluates the proposal against the six criteria that are adopted within the zoning ordinance. The first three criteria ensure that the proposed development is in harmony with the comprehensive plan, the intent of the zoning district, and the character of the adjacent property. And then Criteria three, four through six look at whether or not the site is adequately served by essential public services, whether there is the preservation of significant features on-site, and that no important features are destroyed, and last but not least, that the proposed site layout has a design and a sighting that is appropriate for the character of the city. So planning staff looked at each of these criteria in depth, and for criteria number one concluded that this proposal is in harmony with the comprehensive plan. The property is actually designated as Colonial Williamsburg Support, and the purpose of this designation is to have uses that include a variety of commercial and industrial facilities that support the function of the Colonial Williamsburg Historic District. The second criteria is the zoning district itself, and whether it meets the harmony and intent of the zoning district, and we find that this proposal does. Essentially, the museum support district is established to allow uses that are related to and support the functioning of Colonial Williamsburg's historic area, and we find an arrival center fits nicely with that intent. Moving on to criteria number three, we reviewed whether or not the proposal is in harmony with the character of adjacent properties and development. This project's bordered by Lafayette Street to the north. Colonial Williamsburg Coach and Livery Stables are to the, um, to the east, and to the south is Franklin Street. As we mentioned, the Mount Ararat Baptist Church is located adjacent to this project. That's a church that is in use, and that building will be preserved, and there are no residential neighborhoods that are immediately adjacent to this proposal, so we don't find that there would be an impact in that regard. Moving on to criteria number four, adequately served by essential public services. This site is serviced by public streets, drainage facilities, fire protection, and public water and sewer. As part of this proposal, the planning director requested that a traffic impact analysis was conducted for the development. That study looked at the existing vehicle trips on the surrounding road network, and also looked at the expected traffic in the coming years. That included the traffic that will be generated from the sports complex that's under construction. The conclusion of that report was that no intersections need to be improved as a result of this development. The applicant has included crosswalk improvements to the intersection of Lafayette Street and North England Street, as well as the intersection of Lafayette Street and North Waller Street and Capitol Landing Road. So those improvements will be put in place as a result of this proposal. Moving on to criteria number four, staff evaluated this against the preservation of significant features. This site will include the removal of existing CW support facilities, none of which have been deemed to be historically significant. I will note that the applicant has worked with the city of Williamsburg to ensure that the mature trees that are located adjacent to Lafayette Street will be preserved as much as possible. Our comprehensive plan calls for a sidewalk to be installed along that frontage. There's a lot of mature trees that really help establish the character of the corridor, and the applicant has worked with us to locate that sidewalk in a way that doesn't remove, that doesn't involve the removal of those trees. And as previously mentioned, the historic Mount Ararat Baptist Church will remain undisturbed. Finally, finally looking at the site layout, the Architectural Review Board has approved the proposed demolition and design of the new facility. The applicant has designed the parking to be scaled and located in such a way with landscaping that this will complement the existing character of the area, and will also include pedestrian connections so that somebody can walk from this proposed site into city infrastructure and into the Colonial Williamsburg area unimpeded. So as a result, staff concludes that this meets all six criteria of special use permits, and we do recommend approval of the arrival center and the parking master plan that accompanies it. The ARB reviewed this at their October fourteenth meeting, and they approved the proposed design of the arrival center by a vote of seven to zero. The Planning Commission evaluated this at their October fifteenth meeting, and they recommended approval of the design and the use of the arrival center by a vote of, it was actually five to one. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have, and the applicant team is here tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before I open the public hearing, does Council have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have one.
Yeah, please.
When you talked about the improvement to the crosswalks, I want to make sure I'm clear that was, did that include the crosswalk to, for most, I think mostly employees use to access the tunnel to Bruton Heights?
So are you referring to the existing underground?
The existing crosswalk that, that crosses Lafayette to go over to the tunnel to, to access Bruton Heights. Is it improvements for that crosswalk as well?
The, I'm not sure about that. I know the tunnel will stay in place, and I can check with the applicant team in case they've had updated talks with the city engineer. I know the, um, the crosswalk will be put in for Lafayette and North Waller, and for North England and Lafayette Street, so.
Yeah, 'cause as I travel that corridor, not a lot of people stop now for, for that crosswalk to go over to the tunnel, and with the traffic increase, I'm sure it's gonna be even more difficult.
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, is, and I just have one question as well, and I'm not sure who's best to answer it, but is this designed to alleviate the, some of the coach bus parking that happens closer into the historic area as it is today?
So I believe the intent of this from the applicant is to help alleviate some of that. Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Ramsey?
I don't have any questions, but I reviewed the Planning Commission meeting this morning, and the applicant answered some of the questions. And for the buses, the idea is that they will drop off visitors at the arrival center, as I understand it, and then go to an off-site parking area to wait until they come back to pick up any tour groups.
Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing and invite anybody who would like to come forward to speak to this. Just this matter. I'm sure you got it, something, no? Okay, well, so I'll close the public hearing on this, and I'll come back to Council for discussion and consideration. And I'll just start with, you know, I think it's, uh, it's a long day in coming that this site has seen some redevelopment, uh, and so I'm pleased to see that happening. I also am excited about the additional parking that will be made available for visitors to, uh, park closer to the downtown area, um, and I think that that'll benefit us in many ways, um, maybe alleviate some parking congestion downtown, but then also provide additional folks to, to walk downtown and, and participate in activities, so.
Yeah, no, I agree. It's exciting to see all this come together, and as you mentioned, it's, uh, kind of long overdue.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I just want to say that I, I agree with that, and I appreciated that one, couple things that I had heard in this dialogue in the community is about the buses, you know, kind of always being right, right there, maybe clogging up, um, the streets nearby, so I hope that this does alleviate that issue. And then also, uh, questions about the traffic study and the, the impact into some of our , uh, close-end neighborhoods on traffic. So I appreciated the clarity that, uh, the traffic study that was done did include looking forward, and not just how things are, but anticipated traffic from the sports complex. So I just wanted to elevate those two things that I thought, you know, I had heard that, that were addressed, so thank you very much.
Ms. Ramsey?
And I don't have any other questions. My comment is that, like you, I believe this is a long time coming, and it sort of fits nicely in with, uh, completion of the Archaeological Center. So some of the, a lot of the functions that are taking place over in this area will move to that. Uh, with the Sports and Events Center being completed next summer, there will be additional parking over there, so it's nice to have parking closer in. And the majority of visitors have changed the way that they travel and visit, so I think it's good having this right there. And I think that people need to understand, too, that this is not to replace the Visitor Center, that this is an arrival center, and that the Visitor Center will still remain and have functions at its location.
Good, thank you. Would you like to make a motion?
So I move that City Council approve resolution PCR twenty-five dash oh-one-eight and PCR twenty-five dash oh-two-four.
Second.
Ms. McKay?
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kernscher?
Aye.
Okay. Takes us now to item B, consideration and action regarding proposed resolution twenty-five dash zero, uh, two-zero, authorizing the issuance of water and sewer utility system revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed ten million dollars. Ms. Dameron, I believe. Welcome.
Thank you, and, uh, good afternoon. Uh, the resolution, of course, is asking Council to approve the issuance of ten million, up to ten million dollars in revenue bonds. This was part of our FY twenty-six budget. It was als- also presented and discussed at our budget retreat. We do have, um, Jack Reed with us, Director of Public Works and Utilities, that can answer questions regarding the, the projects or the master plan. But at this point, I'd like to ask, uh, James Sanderson with Davenport to step up. He can answer questions regarding the bonds, but he'd also like to share the proposals that we've received and their recommendation for what we might consider.
Thank you, Ms. Dameron. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. Again, Jimmy Sanderson with Davenport Company, uh, financial advisor to the city. Um, as Barbara mentioned, um, you know, we, we talked with, with Council at your board retreat about how to ph- phase in some of these funding, uh, proposals that we're gonna get. This is the first of that. We reached out to banks, um, ended up getting seven proposals, um, various options within them, uh, the one that fit, uh, the best for what we had talked about, uh, at the board retreat, which was, um, a three-year note. The plan was to take that out after three years for a longer term, ultimately thirty-year borrowing, pretty typical for utilities, but this is just sort of the first step of that. Atlantic Union Bank provided the lowest, lowest interest rate, three-point-three-oh-eight percent, uh, well below the five percent interest rate we showed you, um, back in, uh, back in February, I believe. Um, the, again, it's interest-only, uh, the expectations would be taken out permanently after that three-year period. It does have the ability to prepay at any time, um, if we wanted to take it out early for some reason. To give you a sense of the, sort of the high to low, Atlantic Union was the, the lowest of the bids, um, and the high end was four-point-six percent. It sort of fell in the middle, I would say, that they averaged toward, uh, toward the lower end, but that gives you a sense of the, of the range that we got. So good, good response, very pleased with the caliber of the institutions that responded, uh, and the interest rates that you received.
So, uh, so if I understand correctly, the first three years would be an interest-only note, um, and then at the conclusion of that three years, we would have to go out and find permanent financing.
That's right, that's right.
Would the, the nature of the bond change in such a way that interest rates may be affected differently?
Um, s- so the, the loan at that point would be a long-term loan.
Right.
Uh, twenty-five probably years or so, maybe thirty. Um, again, the, our, our analysis has used a five percent interest rate on that, which is still, I would say now, a hundred and fifty basis points above, maybe a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-five basis points above where we are today, so you've got a fair amount of room of, uh, of cushion on that interest rate as well. So, um, again, I think that the plan would be, um, again, we're trying to phase this in, we want to keep the impact on, uh, the system as low as we can. You know, again, I think that this one transaction in and of itself is not going to be the mover of having to increase interest rates going forward. I mean, you've got debt surface that's rolling off, uh, that's a positive thing, um, and this is going to be layered into that, so we took that into account, um, in that analysis.
Yeah, well, so I, I, yeah, I think as we, we settle off some of the other debts, um, moving to principal and interest after that point, so that our debt level, uh, and debt payments aren't so significant.
That's correct.
Makes perfect sense.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, anything?
I have no questions, thanks.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, with that, I'll open the public hearing on this matter, and I do have one speaker's card, Mr. Robert Wilson. Welcome, sir.
Uh, Robert Wilson, twenty-two, the Palisades. So as you know, I've been kind of a longtime critic of the city's, um, failure to invest and maintain its water system. Uh, so, you know, I'm supporter of, of, you know, making these improvements that, that were proposed in the, in the budget earlier this year. I have some questions about the financing, or at least the transparency about what this is actually gonna cost us. So, uh, what I just heard is we're gonna do a short-term note of three years, and then refinance it over twenty-five to thirty years, something like that. Uh, the bond that was attached to here talks about an interest rate up to six percent and a term up to forty years, so pretty big difference. I assume that, let's say we finance it over thirty years at four percent. The actual cost of that ten million dollars is gonna be about seventeen-point-three million dollars. It's gonna cost the city seven-point-three million dollars in interest to finance it over that period of time. Uh, I hope we don't extend it over forty years, because that would cost about another three million dollars. So there's, you know, some issues with respect to transparency about what the true costs are gonna be of these type of financing instru- uh, instruments, and I would encourage the city to be a little more transparent about what the total cost is. We need to go forward with it, let's just tell everybody what the true cost is gonna be, how we're gonna finance it, and, uh, and move forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Apologize for my coughing. Um, yeah, so this is something, you know, Council and, and the community's been talking about for, for a period of time now, and, and certainly we've had plenty of presentations, uh, since February when we were working on the budget, so, um, I think this is the next step for us, and, um, you know, making sure that our water system is modernized and, and up-to-date is absolutely important to us, so I certainly would support this. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I agree. Um, obviously, Mr. Reed, uh, put, you know, developed a master plan, and we really don't have an option but to invest in, uh, our water and sewer system, so, and as you indicated, we've been talking about this for, for quite a while, so, um, I'm excited that we're moving forward, um, and, and even though we have a stable system, it's even gonna be better in the future.
Yes, I think that to not be here and taking this step, we would not be doing what we said we were gonna do, and what we've been planning to do, uh, and taking the responsible steps forward that we need to in order to modernize and protect our water supply, and as a, as a, as a council and as a city and community move forward responsibly in doing so.
Ms. Ramsey?
I, I agree. Uh, the city and city, um, leaders were forward-thinking back in the forties to, to purchase the Waller Mill Reservoir for the city, and if I remember correctly, the water plant is pretty much the same one that we've had all of that time, and so we really need to invest in it to keep everything as stable and pouring forth as, as much as we can. So I'm in favor of this as well.
Okay.
So with that, I move that City Council approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty to approve the issuance of water and sewer systems revenue bonds.
Second.
Ms. McKay?
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kernscher?
Aye.
Okay, takes us now to reports, and first is the monthly financial statement. Ms. Dameron, welcome again.
I am going to start reviewing October with the sales tax revenue, and as this chart shows, the percentage of budget we, we have collected. I actually went back and looked at what we actually ended each year with, and it was interesting to note that it, what we had received in Octo- as of October thirty-first of each year was about seventeen percent consistently. So right now, we're about one-point-eight percent below where we were this time in FY twenty-five. Um, I'm, you know, we could project that maybe we'll come in a little under budget, uh, but looking back, there are other years that we exceeded the budget, um, even though we were at seventeen percent by enough that I'm not ready to make that call yet. We'll certainly continue to monitor that each month. Um, and then when we look at a, our room and meals tax, um, we're about fourteen percent at this point in time compared, uh, ahead of where we were last year. But I will tell you that we have really been focusing on, um, some delinquent accounts, and that amount is mixed up in those numbers. However, I think that, um, we're still doing very well comparatively. I just want to point out, not quite as well as that might illustrate. And then, um, while we have the same thing in meals, not to the significant amount that we've picked up or, um, toward delinquencies. Our meals were, um, up at almost one percent ahead of where we were last year this time, um, but still doing very well. Again, we'll continue to monitor that. Our tourism taxes, we are, is review, review the two-dollar lodging tax. We're about eight-point-two percent ahead of where we were this year. Um, again, there are a lot of, uh, collections that we've really been focused on and getting up-to-date, um, so that is part of that number. However, I, I still think we're doing very well, uh, with where we're at. I just want you to recognize, not eighteen-point-two percent better. Um, and then with the historic sales tax, uh, we're about level with where we were last year, and if you know, we've been watching that the last year or so pretty close, and you can see that in twenty-five, we came in at, at, um, seventeen percent of budget at this time compared to in two thousand twenty-four, we were at about twenty-two percent. And then, um, I did want to show the real estate revenue, even though, uh, that's not due till the first of December, um, we're still tracking very well. You'll note, though, that that is all over the place at this point in time during the year, and I just kind of read that is, um, people pay at different points in time, and there's, it's not really a good prediction where we're at right now, although I think our collections are pretty, um, strong at this point in time. And then our local, um, our personal property tax, uh, again, this is another one, you'll look in twenty-four, we had very little collections at this point in time, and then in twenty-six, we're, we're seeing that revenue stream come in pretty strong. I will note that last year, um, we, we ended the budget a couple of hundred thousand below where we were in twenty-four, and I think that was because we were seeking, um, a higher PPTRA, Personal Tax Relief, um, percentage, because we had under-collected in a prior year and wanted to get that back to, to the citizens. And so this, this, these numbers do not have what we get from the state in the personal property tax relief, um, and so you can see that in these numbers. And then our, our business property taxes, um, also coming in pretty strong at this point in time. And again, that's not necessarily an indicator of how we're gonna end the year at this point. It will be as we get closer, um, to, uh, December first, uh, but I wanted to show those numbers just to give you a feel of, of what it can vari- what that variance looks like throughout the years. And where with sales tax oftentimes, and meals and lodging, we can kind of use where we're at at a point in time to determine whether we need to be concerned, not so true with these. That's all of the slides that I have. I did want to remark that our, and all of our funds were operating within budget. Uh, utility revenues appear to be coming in strong. Next year, I'll probably start sho- showing slides on those revenues. They're not very comparable right now, because last year we had a quarterly, um, billing process, and this year we're monthly. But the, uh, expenses in utilities are, are actually truck, tracking below budget at this point. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Dameron. I don't have any questions.
Yes, no questions, thank you.
None for me, thanks. And for me, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, item B is monthly departmental operating reports. I'm gonna ask who it is, but I see the chief is on his way.
Yes, sir. Come on, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to talk about the police department. Today, we're gonna talk about the most exciting thing that I think I can talk to you about, and that is the new police building. Uh, we are well on our way. In, in fact, this picture was taken a week or so ago. In fact, this picture was taken a week or so ago, and if, really, if you drove by it today, you might feel like this isn't the same building we've advanced so far. Henderson and their team are working day and night trying to get the same built for us, and they're doing a fantastic job. As you might imagine, Leslie Henderson and I have been in conversation quite a bit. As you get down to the wire, things come up, things are happening, and so there's been a lot of communication, making sure that we all knew where we were. And so we're anticipating probably having that certificate of occupancy around December the 31st. Given the weather and the holidays, we are thinking probably more like the first or second week of January, and then soon thereafter, we'll start moving in with our blinds, with our furniture, with our technology, and that sort of thing. So hopefully, late January, early February, we're really moving in, and it's actually starting to look like a police department that we can work out of. To the right of the screen here, you can see, and I'll advance this just a little bit, you can see, just so that folks that haven't driven past it have some idea of the layout, we back right up to the water tower there on Lafayette, and that space to the right will be secure parking. Space in the front will be visitor parking. And then this picture does a good job of sort of demonstrating to the left where we do plan on moving the roadway over a tad, and there'll be a little bit of road diet there so that probably it will calm the traffic a little bit, slow cars down a little bit, but also will give us a bit more green space on that side, which we do think will make it more appealing to folks. But if you were to walk over there when you leave here, you will see that what appears to be open spaces is mostly filled with glass at the moment. And so, really, they're doing a great job. They're getting it done very quickly, but again, they're not doing anything to jeopardize the quality, and we're very excited about it. As you know, when we are complete, this is what we're going to look like, and we really are on track. Very excited about it. So I promise to be brief, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Well, thank you, Chief, and I too am very excited about the prospects of this being completed. Seems like it's been moving at a good pace, certainly since it came out of ground. It's moved right along. I am hearing plenty of comments about, wow, what are we going to do with that water, the water tank back there? Somebody suggested we should paint it, make it look like the powder magazine, but that's just...
Well, I appreciate you mentioning that. In fact, the wonderful Jack Reed and I have been talking about that, and he has some ideas for it, so I certainly won't steal his thunder, but we do think there's an effort underway.
Perfect. I don't have any other questions. Mr. Vice Mayor?
No question, Chief. Just thank you and excited to see completion and get you all out of this building over here.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I've said many times that the facilities that you all are in now, or if anybody's been in them, you would know that this building is needed, and it really is a huge improvement, and I'm just looking forward to it being done. And I'm probably, I'm sure you are even more, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Same for me. We'll be glad to be there for the ribbon cutting.
To folks in the community who haven't been to the old building, it's sort of a relic. I encourage you to come by one last time before we're out of here if you haven't seen it, so...
Do the before and after.
Thank you all again for the support with it. I really appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Okay. City managers report, anything? Mr. Treble? Shelton, anything?
Nothing today.
Takes us now to open forum, which is an opportunity for anybody in the audience who would like to come forward and address City Council. Please to come forward. Just state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to about five minutes. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Charlie. I'm a William &amp; Mary student and Williamsburg resident, and I'm here today to discuss the City of Williamsburg contract with Flock. For those in the audience who may not be aware, Flock is a company that specializes in automatic license plate readers, which are cameras. If you know what they look like, I'm sure you've seen them around. These cameras are on 24/7. They're recording every license plate that passes them and tracking them using AI. They are not for traffic enforcement. They are for tracking people, specifically designed for tracking people. According to the Virginia State Code, police officers can access this tracking data without a warrant and likely with little cause. There are 32 of these cameras in Williamsburg. I have many questions about Williamsburg Police Department's use of Flock cameras, but I would briefly like to share some information that I discovered about the company the City of Williamsburg is paying to keep us safe. Earlier this year, a senator from Oregon, Senator Rob Wyden, was pressured by his constituents to investigate the use of Flock cameras in his state. He launched an investigation, which ended with him writing a letter directly to the CEO of Flock, and I pulled some quotes that I would like you to consider. "Flock has built a dangerous platform in which abuse of surveillance data is almost certain." And again, this is directly addressed to the CEO of Flock. "I now believe that abuses of your product are not only likely, but inevitable, and that Flock is unable and uninterested in preventing them." The issues that this senator is presenting in his letter are not just relevant in Oregon, but everywhere that these cameras are in place. Flock performs no proactive internal audits to make sure the data their cameras are collecting is not being abused. When they are confronted with instances of abuse, Flock has responded exclusively by avoiding blame and attempting to twist the narrative. The video data that they collect is stored in a cloud-based service, which allows federal agencies to potentially directly request video data from Flock and circumvent local law enforcement entirely. Additionally, there are many documented instances of federal law enforcement running searches either using local police department accounts or simply leveraging their authority to make local police hand over their video data. Instances in Virginia include officers simply listing ICE fugitive or controlled border protection as their reasons for using these cameras. Neither of these are the duties of local police departments. It is technically required for conducting a search with the Flock system data that a purpose of the search is logged. There is no requirement that the search be part of an official investigation, however. And there are many recorded instances of officers simply listing investigation as their reason for looking up whoever they want. There are some protections in place in Virginia against ALPR abuse that I would be happy to discuss, but I'm sure you can all see now how the system itself that this company has built is rife for abuse. Not only that, but Flock will refuse to take blame and only make minimal changes when told that their system is being mismanaged. Take Illinois, for example. They passed legislation last year that would limit Flock camera video, that would limit what Flock camera video data can be shared and with who. Flock claimed they worked to comply with this new law, but then it was discovered that agencies outside of Illinois were able to get around the law and use the video data anyway. Journalists and experts all over the country are raising alarms about Flock's vulnerability to hacking, which could allow for the selling of data about anyone's movements who drives past one of these cameras, which, if you drove here today, likely includes you. Not only that, but Flock is building a new tool called Nova, which reportedly matches license plate numbers with contact details like phone numbers and email addresses and sometimes mailing addresses. There's even documentation of Flock innovators saying their next jump is from license plate readers to a people lookup system using facial recognition. Flock's data system was constructed irresponsibly and is managed by a company that takes no blame for their actions. Instead, they choose to put the entire burden of data security and auditing on local police and local government who are not equipped for it due to no fault of their own. For this reason, nine cities across the US have already canceled their contracts with Flock or let them lapse. And my question to you today is, would you be opening to join these cities and getting Flock out of Williamsburg too? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward? Welcome. Just state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Ella Forlan. I live at 508A Newport Avenue. I'm also a student at William &amp; Mary, and I am also very concerned about the Flock cameras that have been placed around Williamsburg. As said before, Flock is an extremely irresponsible company that will not take precautions to protect our privacy, thus leaving us open to warrantless surveillance and potentially dangerous infringements on our personal freedoms. However, I have also found many instances of Flock cameras being used wrongfully to accuse people of crimes they did not commit. In Denver, Chrissiana Elzer was accused of stealing a package due to Flock camera footage. When she was informed of the accusation, the informing officer told her, "There is zero doubt that you stole this pack, that you stole this package. I wouldn't have come here unless I was 100% sure." Despite the fact that Elzer didn't steal the package and wasn't present at the doorstep, they said, that she had taken the package from, she even had undeniable evidence from her Google Maps location log to prove that she was nowhere near the crime scene when this package was stolen. However, in response to seeing this evidence, the police officer continued to tell her that any evidence she had wasn't worth it because of the Flock cameras' data proved her guilt. In security camera footage of the conversation, the police officer told her, and this is a verbatim quote, "We have cameras in this town, and you can't get a breath of fresh air in or out of this place without us knowing." While she was eventually able to void her summons because of the evidence she collected on herself, she feels that she would have been arrested and convicted if she had not been able to explicitly prove her innocence using other data. In this instance, law enforcement acted overly aggressive with Flock camera information to the point of nearly convicting an entirely innocent woman of theft. In other instances, police officers have used ALPR cameras to effectively stalk citizens. According to the Wichita Eagle, a Kansas police chief used the system a staggering 288 times to stalk his ex-girlfriend and her new boyfriend. He even used Flock to track them outside of his jurisdiction. In Texas, a woman was tracked after police suspected that she had given herself an abortion, and after she left the state, they continued to track her movement to Illinois, where her actions would not have been considered illegal. You may hear these instances and think that they are few and far between, but these will become increasingly commonplace as Flock expands and more cities adopt this technology. In fact, they have recently partnered with Ring Cameras. We tend to see AI information as infallible, but it can be deeply flawed. And rates of unsubstantiated accusations using data from ALPR cameras will only increase if we do not take steps to limit the surveillance. Everyone has the right to live in a safe community, and I understand the sentiment behind Williamsburg adopting Flock cameras, but we cannot safely use these cameras without opening ourselves up to illegitimate accusations due to technological failures at best and explicit abuse at worst. I urge you to reconsider Williamsburg's contract with Flock because these cameras are not making us safer. Instead, they connect us with an irresponsible company that benefits when we are suspicious of our friends, our neighbors, and our community members. This company undermines trust, due process, and the right to privacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward? Seeing none, I'll close the open forum, and we'll move on. I don't believe we have any unfinished business. And so on our new business, we have consideration, first item is consideration in action regarding proposed Resolution 25-22 establishing the City of Williamsburg's 2026 legislative agenda. Ms. DeWitt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. In October, at your work session, we brought seven issues for your consideration for your legislative agenda for 2026. And as you know, these come from your community partners listed here, also our support organizations, and from residents as well. And so we will refine these into a legislative agenda that we hope is short and to the point for the legislators, and these are the contents of that statement. So since your October work session, we have heard from William &amp; Mary, and they have asked us to add some of their investment requests, and I'll go over that in a moment. Otherwise, everything has remained the same as what you saw in October.
Ms. DeWitt, can you put your microphone down a little bit?
Sure. Happy to.
Maybe it's just me, I'm losing my hearing, I don't know.
No. So to review the priority, is that better? The priority issues here, here are the top three city charter updates, which you approved at a former meeting through a resolution and public hearing. Parking enforcement authorization to grant us as a small city with more than 2 million visitors, tourists coming annually, to be able to participate in enforcement authorization as cities of the size of 40,000 residents or more concurrently do. And then increased regulatory authority over residential rental properties located near universities. So those were the three priority issues. We look at another issue area of focus. This has been on your legislative agenda for many years now, and most of your supporting organizations have this as well. The concept that local land use decisions should remain local where they are best decided, and we are a Dillon Rule state, so every year, we see threats to your local zoning authority through legislation that sometimes is passed at the General Assembly. We also have continuation requests for state funding for Trail 757 and the Capital Trail Extension. The cap, capital, cap-to-cap trail goes from Richmond to Jamestown. This effort, Trail 757, is to extend that from Jamestown through the City of Williamsburg down to Fort Monroe. And then passenger rail. So passenger rail is an important part of our economy, and we have two Amtrak trains today, and we want to make sure Amtrak in the state know that we are still seeking that third train, which is scheduled to arrive as soon as the long bridge construction at the Potomac finishes. But we want to keep that, keep that on everyone's radar. Another request we had was from James City County and the Clerk of the Circuit Court. This is a carryover from last year to support efforts to remove budget language that restricts excess fees that come from the state to help fund the clerk's office. During the Great Recession of 2008, these fees were reduced, and they've never been reinstated, so the clerks asked us to support that effort. And this was the list of investments from William &amp; Mary that we received since your October work session. You'll see that's for Yule Hall, for student veterans, a transition pilot program, and for a law clinic. Here is the timeline. As we enter the General Assembly session, which will start in January, we will have and schedule a meeting with our legislators, our senator and our delegate-elect. It looks like it's going to be December 4th to review the legislative agenda with them. And as you saw, our three priority areas that we had uncovered in the beginning will require patrons to introduce legislation for us. And that does not happen every year, but that will be happening this year. The session will begin in January, and it is a long session with a new governor, and it should conclude mid-March. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So we did talk about this last month, and one of the things that I always appreciate about our legislative agenda is that it's not so heavy with so many requests, because it tends to, our requests tend to get lost in the General Assembly, so we've kind of highlighted a few of the real, the bigger items that we want to be able to communicate. So I think we've done that here in this legislative agenda, so thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions. We had a good discussion, I think, about this last month, as the mayor mentioned, and I think that these reflect, you know, what we had said and talked about and what we've heard from the community and our partners that they would like to see us advocate, so it's a good, it's a good list.
I agree. It's a good list, and I think the proof is in the pudding as far as what we've done the past few years of keeping a very tight priority list, and it's worked well for us. So I feel we do well to continue with that same process. With that, I move to that City Council approved Resolution 25-22 establishing the City of Williamsburg 2026 legislative agenda.
Second.
Ms. McKay?
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Aye.
Ms. Kernshear.
Aye.
Okay. Item B is consideration in action regarding the bids for the FY '25 SRG resurfacing of York Street, Jamestown Road, and Richmond Road. Welcome, sir. Mr. Clark.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pons, City Council members. Go forward. So I'm here before you today to request the consideration and authorization of the FY '25 SGR resurfacing of the York Street, Jamestown Road, and Richmond Road project. Other Works and Utilities staff have previously prepared three separate applications to VDOT's State of Good Repair SGR program for the milling and paving of these three roadways. All three applications were approved with the funding of the following allocations. York Street received $418,638.38. Jamestown Road allocation was $758,934.75. And Richmond Road allocation was for $1,255,859.63, for a total of $2,433,477.76. So the project is three separate UPCs, but I, we, they are in the location of Rich, for York Street, the destination is 125491, and it starts from the intersection of Lafayette Street, Page Street, and York Street, and continues to the corporate limits, which is just south of Quaterpath, Quaterpath Road. of QuarterPath Road. Jamestown Road, which is UPC 125506, starts from the pavement joint that's over near Mill Neck Road and continues on until it reaches South Boundary Street intersection. And the third one, which is Richmond Road, which is UPC 126119, starts at the pavement joint, which is just north of High Street, and continues on to the intersection of Governor Berkeley Road, and it does include the intersection as well. Oops. Okay, I can't do that. Sorry, I wanted to go back. Along with the milling and resurfacing, the contractor will be upgrading all handicap ramps at street intersections to current ADA and PROEG standards, as well as the intersection, as well as installing detectable warning surfaces at all commercial driveways. This will also include the reapplying of pavement markings that are currently along each roadway, which are stop bars, crosswalks, centerline parking lanes, and of course bike lane markings. The project was advertised for bid through the invitation for bid process back in June, and the department received three bids in August of that year. The bids were within $200,000 of each other, with Allen Myers of Virginia being the apparent lowest responsible bidder at $1,910,777.0. Due to seasonal changes and most of the asphalt plants closing, or soon will be closing for maintenance purposes, we anticipate that the work will start in March of 2026 when the asphalt plants are back online. Work at all three locations is designated to take 120 days from a notice receipt. Staff will be cognizant of the activities and events occurring around the William Mary area, especially for the Jamestown Road resurfacing, as well as evaluating potential for night work for the Richmond Road corridor due to avoid disrupting the commercial properties along that corridor. Staff recommends City Council award the bid and authorizes the city manager to execute a contract between the city and Allen Myers Virginia for the FY25 SGR resurfacing of York Street, Jamestown Road, and Richmond Road project for the contract price of $1,910,777.0. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions or concerns regarding the item.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Yes, some of these roads are definitely in need, particularly over there on York Street, I noticed that most. But will this project, will these three different projects happen consecutively or congruently?
Concurrently. So Allen Myers is the general DC, but they may have a sub that will do the concrete work, which is all the ramps, but they have their own crews to do the paving, milling and paving. So depending how many crews they have going, they may do one street at a time, or if they have available two pavement crews, they might do two streets at the same time. But the 120 days is for all three streets to be completed in one sweep.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Clark. The only question I, does the city have a history with Myers?
We do. One of the projects they resurfaced, and they had done previously, I remember that was probably 2018, 2019, Bypass Road, that Parkway or Page Street, there was a few other roadways for that city one. That was a, or was a, that was a resurfacing project that they originally done for us as well. So we do have history with the company.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have the same question about, as the mayor, about when all this was happening, so I understand it will happen at the same time. So everybody will just hopefully be patient as we get all this done, and it will be better at the end, at the other side of it. But this is actually more of a just curious question. You mentioned that the asphalt plants are offline, and that's why this is being a little pushed out to the spring of '26?
Correct.
Why is that? Why are they?
Maintenance. Every year, they want to do maintenance, that's one reason. So they'll clean out their hoppers, a lot of cleaning, a lot of maintenance, anything that's broken.
Okay.
A lot of times, I do this there in the winter months, because you can only produce asphalt and play it at certain temperatures. And 45-degree, you know, anything less than 50 really is not too, so plus getting in the 30s at night and even during the daytime, you really can't put the asphalt down anyway. So they close down for the maintenance.
So this is expected, normal standard operating procedure?
Correct.
Nothing weird is going on that could mess up the works?
Yeah, this is typical, normal maintenance for them to try to keep their plants operational. And just because, yeah, to put asphalt down, you run the risk of it not actually adhering to the, to the, and being a good roadway surface.
Great, well, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. And just as a follow-up comment to Stacy's regarding the timing of this, if we have a winter like we had this winter, it's probably good to have the resurfacing done after the snowplows and salt and all of that's put down as opposed to before. So I just have just one clarification for everyone, is that even though we're approving this amount of money for the city manager to execute the contract,
Right.
the funds have already been received and are part of VDOT's SGR State of Good Repair System. If you could explain that a little bit?
The funds are allocated, which means they are there for the city to be reimbursed by. So the process is we'll enter into a contract with the contractor. The funding, they invoice us, we pay them, and then we invoice VDOT and get reimbursed. So the money is there in a pot with VDOT, and then we just, as we get invoiced, we will invoice VDOT for the same amount of money until it gets to the caps.
And so we'll get, and if we did not follow through with this, then the money would just sort of, I mean, it is allocated specifically for these three paving projects?
Correct. Each project was individually separate as an application. So they're each amount, each pot of money is for that specific project, and we will be tracking them as separate UPCs in the construction phase to make sure that we know which project was, how much pavement was put, how much concrete was used for each of the three projects, and then that gets sent to VDOT. Yeah, they're very good at wanting the paperwork to say, make sure that we spent every dollar that we asked for.
Okay, good. Well, I think we're good at that. Go ahead.
Well, follow-up question in terms of the technology that we're using. I know that these roads were originally cement pads with joints in between, and oftentimes those joints will come through the asphalt. And over the years, we've tried to put down felt and do certain things to try to mitigate that, those joints from causing cracks in the asphalt. Is there something that we're going to do differently this year, or just continue to try to do our best to mitigate that?
No. For Jamestown Road and York, both have the concrete bases underneath it. We're not going to get touching that. We're again only milling the top pavement surface. But yes, this year, we're going to try a little different where we use a more advanced asphalt mix, where the contractor will add in a additive. I forgot what it was called, but there will be a different type of additive added to the mix where it's a lot more stability, where when they put it down, it's more, it should help with the reflective cracking that we see with the, so instead of the matting, the asphalt that we put back down will have an additive that will help harden that material so that those crackings doesn't show as predominantly as they have been. So it's a little bit of a risk in terms of we aren't doing the same thing we used to or have done in the past, but they recommend it, they say it's a better product now, and I'm going to say, okay, show us.
Certainly be very expensive to try to remove that cement roadways.
Yes.
I mean, we'd have to dig down pretty far to do that. So whatever we do to try to make it better, I think, is a good step forward. So I appreciate that. All right, any other questions for Mr. Clark?
No. So I move that City Council award the bid and authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the FY25 SGR resurfacing of York Street, Jamestown Road, and Richmond Road, UPCs 125491, 125506, and 126119 to Allen Myers Virginia Inc. for $1,910,777, based on unit prices.
Second.
Ms. McKay, call the roll.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer.
Aye.
Okay. Item C is consideration, thank you, Mr. Clark. Item C is consideration and action regarding the purchase of a ALTC Model LR8-60E70RM bucket truck. Mr. Reed.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Members of City Council. As part of the FY26 budget, council approved the purchase of a bucket truck for Public Works to use for lemon tree removal, storm response, and traffic signal maintenance. Public Works staff plan to order the vehicle that meets our specifications from the manufacturer, Altec. Using a Virginia Cooperative Procurement Contract, this vehicle will be available for delivery in approximately six to 12 months, and the city secured a purchase price of This includes the truck abloom for working at heights of up to 75 feet, a 400-pound platform capacity, in addition to many other maintenance-free components. Although this is a budgeted expense, it exceeds the approved amount by $70,422. Public Works staff have coordinated with the Finance Department and the city manager and can cover the shortfall using funds from a recent dump truck and fire apparatus purchase, which were acquired for less than the budgeted amounts. Staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to execute purchase orders for a Altec bucket truck through the Sourcewell Cooperative Procurement Contract for $270,422.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Now, this is not a piece of equipment that we currently own. I mean, I know we're buying this one, but we don't have one in inventory.
We have a smaller version.
And so with this, I presume we'll be able to get higher to trim trees and, it comes to mind, it's Jamestown Road. We always hear people concerned about trees hanging over, so this would be something that would be used in those instances?
Yes, sir. We hope in two years or so, we'd be able to bring all tree work in-house, and this will give us that capability.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, no questions, just everyone works together through finance to find the extra $70,000 to make this purchase.
Barbara and Chief Snyder helped us out with that, so I appreciate that.
So just to, thank you. Just to be clear then, this would be, you just have to keep the smaller one and have this one too. It's not the plan to get rid of the smaller one?
We're going to keep the smaller one in the trees department for a lot of the smaller, like traffic signal maintenance, and then this would be mainly for trees.
Okay. And I think that the goal of bringing all of the maintenance, tree maintenance in-house in a few years is a good goal, because I would suspect that then cost-effective and efficient to do so. So I do appreciate looking and finding the money to make up the shortfall, and you know, this seems like something, this is what we're here for, is to make sure that we can provide the community with the response that they deserve and expect in situations like this. And being able to do this in-house, I think, is definitely a worthy goal, and so I'm happy about this.
Same for me. Having had some tree work done at my house, I can appreciate what it costs to have a commercial company come in, so I think this will bode well for the city in the long term for sure. And as the mayor has commented, we do have a lot of overhanging trees, Jamestown Road, every street we live on, so appreciate the effort to get this purchased.
And I don't guess using the fire department's ladder truck would be an option?
Get cats out of the trees.
Get cats out of the trees. Okay.
We actually joked that we were going to paint this like a fire truck and see which response was faster.
See if Public Works gets to the emergency first?
That's right. I think this one was cheaper. That's right.
Definitely.
A lot cheaper.
Ms. Ramsey, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that City Council authorize the city manager to execute purchase orders for an Altec Model LR8-60E70RM bucket truck through the Sourcewell Cooperative Procurement Contract for $270,422.
Second.
Okay. Dusty?
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer.
Aye.
Okay. Item D is consideration and action to amend the Republic Services LLC contract to include recycling services. Ms. Shelton?
So with the VIPSa contract with TFC terminating on September the 24th, our contract with VIPSa also terminated as a result of that. And so the city communicated with Republic Services, who is our current trash provider, to provide recycling services in the city, and we were prepared to move forward with that last month. Then VIPSa had communications with Republic, and now they have entered into an agreement with Republic. And so the action that we're requesting is for the city to enter into an agreement with VIPSa for Republic to provide recycling services for the city. The agreement is very similar to our previous agreement with VIPSa. The recycling days will stay the same, and the service rate is $8. Mr. Reed is available to answer any questions that you may have about the services, and I can answer any questions you have about the contract.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Shelton or Mr. Reed?
The only question I, in looking at this, because it's now other localities, I mean, obviously, we move very quickly to replace what we, but is there any, is there any doubt that Republic's going to be able to provide the service, taking on the additional services?
I don't believe there's any doubt, no. We have confidence they'll be, they'll do a good job.
Okay.
And my only question is for the resident consumer. Will it be, you said it's going to be the same day, same everything, so really, like to somebody who just puts the recycling out, this is, they're not going to see one bit of change? Okay, wonderful.
There, I think there is one impact, and it's related to the cart, right, Jack? At some point, there may be a cart to replace the cart that we have.
We are going to, there's going to be a cart delivery from Republic. They're going to be providing their own carts. They're actually going to look the same. They should have the brown lid like what you're used to, and then we're going to have to coordinate with TFC to have all of those carts picked up.
And once we have all of the answers to what's going to happen and how to do it, we'll send something out to all of the subscribers.
But in the meantime, it really, the consumer doesn't really have to do anything. So that's just one of everybody to know that this doesn't change their life, really.
Hopefully, everybody won't get used to having an extra can.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. And so Republic has already started picking up, is that what I understand?
We extended with TFC until the middle of December, I think it's December 13.
Oh, December, okay.
And Republic would start then.
Because I know in reading about what's happened here and in James City County, you know, different ones doing different things. And even going with Republic, I imagine that the items that can be recycled stayed the same. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Somebody like to make a motion?
So I move that City Council authorize the city manager to execute a new agreement with VIPSa to include recycling services from Republic Services in the city at a rate of $8 per month per unit.
Second.
Ms. McKay?
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent.
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer.
Aye.
Okay. Takes us now to item E, which is consideration and action to replace the generator at QuarterPath Recreation Center. Mr. Snyder, get to keep your truck.
I do. I'm super excited that Jack is ordering a truck that is white. It'll fit in with the fire department fleet just fine, so nobody will notice the difference at all. It's going to be exciting. So good afternoon, Mayor Pons and Vice Mayor Dent and City Council members. I just wanted to put in front of you today the replacement plan for the generator at QuarterPath Rec. As you and the community are mostly aware, that QuarterPath does serve as our backup shelter, or our shelter in the event that we have to house any of our community residents due to some either natural incident or man-made incident in the city. And so part of that requirement is obviously having backup power. And the current generator that we have there, I believe, was repurposed long before I came to Williamsburg, and so I believe it's maybe its second or third home as it's traveled throughout the city. In fact, the generator is so old, we're not sure how old it is, the folks who work on it. And so we were certainly due to replace that. It's met its useful life, and we were able to secure a grant through the Department of Emergency Management through their Emergency Shelter Upgrade Assistance Grant for a 70/30 split. And so what we're requesting for you today is switch out the current generator, which is diesel-fueled, and we'll put in a natural gas-fed generator for QuarterPath for a total price of approximately $145,000. The cost share for that will be 30% for the city, and the other 70% will come from the grant. So approximately $45,000 is what the city will pay total for the overall project of that. Lead time for this equipment is a little bit long, as you might expect, so it's about 12 to 16 weeks, so we won't even have the equipment till probably spring. Then we'll work with Jack's team and Public Works, and of course, Robbie and Parks and Rec to coordinate how we're going to install that. It will be a little bit of logistics. We'll have to replace the gas meter at QuarterPath Rec, have to increase the gas meter size, and then some of the utility work as we take out the old generator and put the new generator in. So it'll be a little bit of dancing to make sure that we're able to do that properly, but excited to ask your authorization for Mr. Trobe to go into a contract with Bay Power Solutions to execute this scope of work to replace the generator at QuarterPath. Again, that serves as our emergency shelter when needed. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
Hopefully, we get as much service out of the new generator as we did out of the old one. But when you talk about coordinating the, the, switching the generators out, is there any, is there any opportunity for, for the, is the company can provide some type of power in the event the shelter was needed?
I do not know the answer to that. It's a great question, it's something we certainly can follow.
You know, sometimes they have those truck mounted generators, portable generator that, i- in the event that we needed it.
Yeah, I think, we're certainly looking into that. I think one of the things that we're looking at is it's going to be maybe about 24 hours as we switch the, the gas, where QuarterPath will be offline, where we won't have gas. Again, having to coordinate with Robbie, and then potentially another 24 hours as we switch out the electrical. So it'll be a very short duration, but to your point, we'll make sure that we have an appropriate backup plan, absolutely.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you to everyone for their work on getting this done.
Thank you for the presentation and the additional information. So what happens to the old generator?
I will work with Jack and then finance to determine if there's any place for it to go, or if it can be repurposed again, but most likely it will either be scrapped or sent to, maybe be sold in some other way would be how it will leave our asset inventory.
Thank you.
Your motion?
So I move that city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Bay Power Solutions for the replacement of the generator at QuarterPath Recreation Center.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kerns Chair?
Aye.
Okay. Item F is consideration and action regarding the proposed Resolution 25-21, approving the Historic Triangle Recreational Facilities Authority Finance and Amend Support Agreement. Mr. Trivitt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On Wednesday, the HTRFA authorized Davenport Company to pursue a line of credit with Town Bank that would be the second and final step in our financing plan for the sports center. It allows us to complete the construction by the FFNE, do some, or complete some of the other obligations of the HTRFA's lease, and consider the additional project of a roadway if we so choose. That's the advantage of a line of credit, is that we won't start paying interest until we draw down the money, and we'll only pay interest on the actual amount drawn down. So it really gives us the greatest latitude as we finalize out this product, or project. The city council's action today, just to remind you, is only to extend your current moral obligation to cover that new debt, and that's it.
Thank you. And this is not something new. I mean, we, we had been anticipating that at some point we would be asked to, to provide our moral obligation to a line of credit.
That's right.
Okay, good. Vice Mayor, any questions?
Yeah, that's all I was going to say. It's not, it's not a surprise to us, we knew this was coming at some point, and we need to finish the project, so right thing to do.
Ms. Ramsey?
No, no question, well, just one question for clarification. There've been some question about this increase in the overall cost of the project, and that this line of credit was already, always included in that cost.
Right, our, you know, the, the bond that the HTRFA issued was for, I hope I get this number right, $65 million, thereabout. I know Mr. Sanderson is here, he can answer that specifically, probably to the penny. But, and then the guaranteed maximum price contract for the facility is $80 million, so considerable difference there. And so we always anticipated we'd have to borrow some money to finish out the project. In addition, what we did not do, and, and it's, you know, I think there, there are two ways to approach a project like this. At the very beginning of the project, you can borrow the total sum that you think you might need, which would include things that at that point are estimated costs for FFNE, the final technology plan, et cetera, et cetera. But at that point, you're sort of guessing. And what that does, it puts you in an awkward position later in the project when you go to bid out those things, because then again, the bidders know exactly how much you have budgeted and guess how much the quote's going to be. So this is typically a process where you do it in two phases, that's what we did here. I think it did help our team negotiate better rates, particularly for the FFNE, and allowed those costs to be better certain by the time we're pursuing the line of credit.
Right, and make it more timely with when the FFNE is needed, as opposed to at the beginning of the construction project.
That's right.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
So I move that city council approved Resolution 25-21 is drafted.
Second.
Ms. McKay?
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kerns Chair?
Aye.
Okay, takes us to item 10, which is closed session. I believe we have some?
We do.
Okay.
I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter pursuant to Subparagraph 1 concerning appointments to boards and commissions, one legal matter pursuant to Subparagraph 8 for the purpose of consultation in specific legal matters regarding the provision of legal advice by council concerning a pending, pending contract, and one property matter per Subparagraph 3 regarding the disposition of leasehold interest in city property, the discussion of which is in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining positioning, position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
Your second?
Second.
Ms. McKay?
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kerns Chair?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go into closed session and return for the certification of that closed session.
Section 2.2 - DAS 3712, Dakota, Virginia.
Ms Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
His current chair?
Aye.
Second?
Ms McKay?
Ms Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
His current chair?
Aye.
We are adjourned.